And we are ready.
Thank you Claudia. Good evening and welcome to a virtual special meeting of the city of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board. We are living in extraordinary times. Both the state of Ohio and the city of Dublin have declared states of emergency. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to have virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government. For the present time, we are holding our meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube. You can access the live stream on the city's website. This meeting is for two administrative cases initiated by staff for review and discussion for the commission and the board. No votes will be taken tonight. To submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to the board by the meeting moderator. We want to accommodate public participation and comment to the greatest extent possible. We certainly welcome your comments. Please use a valid name and address when submitting your comments and please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. This is not a perfect system, but we will certainly do our best in these difficult times and we appreciate your patience. This time, we'd like to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please pause while we display the flag. Thank you Jenny. Boarding Commission, if you'll turn off your video and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Invisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. At this point in time, we will present our roll call. Ms. Beal, I will turn it over to you.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Supalack?
Here.
Mr. Schneer?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Ms. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Kanaki?
Here.
And Ms. Cram?
Here. Thank you Ms. Beal. This time I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of tonight's documents into the record.
They're moved.
Thank you Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Again.
Kennedy, thank you for the second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Kanaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer? Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board are responsible for review of the code updates and to provide recommendations on next steps. Our first case tonight is Property Maintenance Code Update 20-097 ADMC. This is an informal review. This application is a request for an informal discussion regarding our property maintenance code and potential additional requirements that may supplement our current code requirements, including the International Property Maintenance Code and Nuisance Code. Looks like this is a triple team item. So staff, I'll give you a moment to get your presentation in order and ready to present and thank you for all of the effort that's gone into this presentation.
Great. Well, I'll do a quick intro while Tammy is pulling up the presentation. So just so everyone's aware, Tammy Noble is a senior planner. I know she's not been to a lot of our meetings, so just wanted to introduce her. She is going to help lead the presentation as well as Greg Jones, who is our code enforcement supervisor. So they're going to provide some background about our previous discussions with city council on this topic, some direction as to a latest committee discussion. And then again, tonight is really to introduce this topic to you and that discussion and then get your feedback on the various options and suggested modifications that could be made and any others that you all have come up with. Tammy has some discussion questions which she included in her memo. Just wanting to make sure that we get your feedback and then how to move forward. So we'll, we'll talk through that and happy to answer any questions you have along the way.
Thank you.
Thank you Jenny. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, and I do appreciate the introduction and like Jenny said, I'm not a staff member that I've probably met everyone involved. I do oversee the long range planning group, so we hope that we get more familiar in the upcoming months with several projects that we have moving, moving forward. But this is a topic that not only your group will be considering tonight, but has been a topic of conversation for a couple of years. And just to facilitate the conversation, I'm starting out, I will ask other people to join in as appropriate. But again, it's an informal discussion, just trying to lead up to some discussion points that we hopefully we will hopefully let us move forward on the topic. So again, it's talking about two different types of regulations, mostly overseen by our code enforcement team. One of which is our property maintenance code and our nuisance code. So just a bit of history, this is just chronological history. The last time that this was a topic of discussion was two different dates that the topic was presented to city council. The last of which was April before that March, where we actually adopted the most recent version of the International Property Maintenance Code, which will be a, a big topic of this conversation. And that's a baseline code regulation that many of the communities use to regulate property maintenance. City council had seen it fit to adopt the 2008 version of that code and that currently is in place. Before that, this topic was introduced to the Public Service Commission, which is a sub-commission of city council. We had a great conversation with the Public Service Commission and a lot of their suggestions have led to this conversation. So again, we're hoping that that will lead our discussion into further recommendations to the city council. Just to give you some reference of, of the duration of how long we've been at least talking about this, this was originally brought before a work session of city council in May of 2018. So we have been reviewing it for some time with the idea that we want to make sure that our codes are as relevant and as active as we would like them to be for our community. So this is just an illustration. As a city planner, I work, I work well with graphics. Again, we're, we're the baseline code regulation that we'll be talking about is the International Property Maintenance Code, which is a, just as a states, is an international model code that a lot of communities have adopted to deal with property maintenance. It's presented by the state, whichever state you would be speaking of, and it's presented to local communities to regulate property maintenance. The, the point that will probably hone in most about this code is that it's a simplistic code that has minimal standards that address health and safety. So there's some restrictions to that code. Not necessarily what we choose to enforce, but honestly, what the state allows us to enforce. So in to supplement that code, we've also adopted a, a public nuisance code. And the public nuisance code is adopted with our zoning code. So it's similar to all the regulations that you probably see in your work life as the Planning and Zoning Commission and Architectural Review Board. It's enforceable as such, same as any type of zoning regulation. But it actually is starting to introduce aesthetic qualities to code enforcement, which is more in line with some of the comments that we're starting to hear about what we'd like to see for the code or what we could see with code. And then finally, the last illustration is where do we go from here? What regulations do we want to see, if any, put in place that furthers this discussion to get us where we want it, where we want us to be? So again, just a little bit about the International Property Maintenance Code. When I first started researching what other communities were doing as far as property maintenance, I found that this is a code that's almost universally adopted by most communities. There's approximately 14,000 communities nationwide that have adopted it. So it's slightly generic. They make it very user friendly for communities to adopt. But it is based on health and safety. So it's, it's based on the general welfare of a community. It's not meant to get into any type of aesthetic qualities. Which is kind of a baseline regulation for our community. And once we get into how codes are enforced, I'll, I'll let Greg talk a little bit about that. But so that's our baseline regulation. And once you move from the International Property Maintenance Code, you get into our nuisance code restrictions. And again, just as an example of how we're slightly turning the discussion into aesthetics, you're starting to regulate exterior modifications and grass and weed restrictions. So again, trying to hear that conversation accordingly. Legal provided in your packet memo that we've, we've circulated a couple of times, but it talks about enforceability. And for the sake of this group, the idea is that it's enforceable, one, and two, that it's enforceable in a number of ways, ranging from fines to any type of court procedures. So there is some, not to be too lax about it, but there's some teeth to those regulations. I'll let Greg, Greg talk about this, but one of the things that we kept talking about when we were speaking with the Public Service Commission is an example. Tell us how these codes apply. And give us a real life scenario of what's going on. So Greg, if you don't mind, this is the Monterey side. I'll let Greg talk about what we found with this particular site.
Certainly. Hello?
You're on. You're, you're good.
Okay. Basically, what, what I can reduce the, the Monterey structures. You'll see the bull points, the building secured, boarded up windows and doors, use of wood material, various size, personal excessive duration of vacancy. The building secured, that, that comes directly from use of the property maintenance code. We don't have anything in our nuisance regulations that would require the vacant structure be secured, but we do in the International Property Maintenance Code. Currently the standard basically for private owned structure such as the Monterey structures. It does permit the property owner to use plywood. There was some discussion earlier and, and I'll let someone else address that, but on the other meeting, we discussed using plexiglass, something of that nature. However, at this time, the, the plywood is the basically the normal standard for that. We, you'll notice, I see that the signs are listed. That is permissible to post the size. Basically, we allowed them to post the size in order, we were having some public dumping, things of that nature. It just reinforced the fact that if someone did, the property owner could prosecute them with the signs in place. Of course, no trespassing, that's, that's legitimate as well on any vacant property. The excessive duration of the vacancy, we have nothing either in the property maintenance code or our nuisance code at this time that regulates how long a property can be vacant. Basically, the only thing that we have is it must be secure at all times, the premise condition such as the mowing, accumulation of trash debris, things of that nature. That's addressed through the public nuisance section of the code, that section 153076.
Okay, thank you Greg. So I guess I'll ask that questions. I feel like this might warrant some questions. We'll kind of, I guess, wait till the end. But I mean, the purpose of this particular discussion is to dissect what we can do with our code and what we perhaps might want to do differently with our code. And this property has been a topic of conversation with many residents. And so we wanted something that was familiar with probably both the boarding commission. So thank you Greg, I appreciate that.
Sure.
So again, this discussion is culminating out of a Public Service Commission meeting that we had in February. It was a lengthy discussion that we had and the idea with that particular session was several things. One, we were asked to address what other communities are doing for property maintenance. We did extensive research amongst the central Ohio region to see how people, other communities were handling property maintenance, to see if there were some other ideas that we should explore. The second is to talk about national trends that might be contributing to the, either directly or indirectly to the lack or I guess the upkeep of property maintenance. And then finally, we posed questions that could commission similar to what we're going to pose to the boarding commission tonight. And through that discussion, I thought it was a very thoughtful conversation about again, the, the purpose of the codes, what we're accomplishing and quite frankly, where the city of Dublin lies in relationship to other communities. And what we found was a lot of the communities that we're talking to have a very real need for strong property maintenance regulations. And some of those needs exasperated when we hit the 2007 recession. When we saw a surge in rental properties and vacant properties, when people couldn't, couldn't keep up the properties the way that they needed to. So I talked to a lot of communities that had enforced different types of regulations, again, that we'll talk about here. And then the outcome, and I think Greg had brought a lot of this forth, was two, two points actually. One, that our level of compliance that we normally get with code, code enforcement is quite high as it compares to other communities. We have, and again, please Greg, if I'm misstating this, correct me. We basically have a 98% compliance rate with code enforcement and that's without it proceeding further to a legal process, court system. And the second thing that we found was that our level, our inventory that would fall into this category of vacant or abandoned properties was rather low compared to other communities, which we're fortunate to to have. But what that, what that means is there's a few properties that are bringing this to the, to the, to the limelight, if you will, and are necessitating this conversation. So with, with everything that we spoke of at the Public Service Commission, they asked that it proceed to this body for a number of reasons. Most importantly, that you're the group, you are the groups that will deal with the outcome of, of zoning regulations as it relates to property maintenance. So the three discussion points that we're alluding to tonight are what, what can we do in terms of our zoning code? I had said that the zoning code gets more into aesthetics. What if anything should we doing? What should we be doing with our zoning code that may further our aspirations for property maintenance? The other item that we contemplated is a registration program where property owners of either rental properties or vacant properties or both would be required to register through the city of good Lord, city of Dublin, so that we're aware of those properties and that any type of issues are immediately remedied through the city of Dublin. And then lastly, we had contemplated a bonding program. And I will tell you, I, of all the communities I spoke with, the bonding program, I'm, I don't know of another community that has put these type of regulations in place. But we do have similar processes that I'll talk about here in a moment. So the first topic that we wanted to start with was zoning code modifications, because quite frankly, again, it's getting up, getting us to the point where we think this is headed. And that's enhancing any type of aesthetic qualities that we might want for these properties. And again, Greg alluded to this, it's, it could be as simple as when, when a property needs to be secure for safety reasons, how is it secured? Is it secured through a material that's simply eliminating any type of trespassing? Or is it something that's more conducive to the buildings that it's, that's surrounding it? And then the, the example that we gave was instead of allowing for boards or plywood or that sort of material, that it be a material that's something that you would similarly find on other buildings. We also talked about clear definitions of what a vacant structure is versus an advanced abandoned structure and whether the enforceability of those two definitions are working for us. And if not, whether we need to enhance those definitions. And lastly, if there's any type of enforcement processes that we need to revisit. The second thing that we want to talk about is the registration process. Many of the communities that I talked to, including quite frankly, the Franklin County requires a registration process. It's more of an administrative process for most of the communities and the purpose is to not only identify the properties that may either fall into one of these categories, but it's also to provide contact information for someone if there is a need to do any type of modifications to the property, especially that's based on safety, that they have an immediate contact that's local and that, that contact information is readily available 24/7, so that we can deal with any type of issues on a timely basis. What's other potential avenues that we've explored or that we've talked through that are not, I would say not commonly placed in other communities, but they could have a variety of different detailed information about the registration process. It could be anything from providing information about insurance, the date of vacancy, so we can determine how long a property is, is remaining vacant. Any type of inspection processes, either that being external inspection processes or internal and whether those inspection processes are required or, or voluntarily based and how often those inspection processes would take place. And lastly, like I said, we also talked about a bonding process, which I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission probably is slightly familiar with. I know that we had adopted a process for our sign regulations. But we also have a bonding process in place for the city of Dublin for our landscape requirements. So they're slightly different, but two different types of regulations that secure monies from property owners to ensure that any type of compliance issues are dealt with and that we have the remedies to deal with them ourselves if, if it's not taken care of by a property owner. I would say again, that I don't know of any type of examples. Thad and I had talked about whether we knew of other communities and that's something we can certainly explore if this group's deemed it appropriate. But again, we would have to probably flush that topic out a bit before we would proceed to city council. So having all of that in mind, hopefully I've at least prepared the discussion to focus on several things that I would like with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architectural Review Board to consider. And first and foremost are the current regulations that we have in place addressing our concerns as a community, are they doing what we need them to do? And if, if they're not, what type of regulations should we be looking at? Should we look at further implementation of registration processes, whether it's for vacant properties or rental properties? If so, what type of requirements should be considered as part of that registration process? Should we investigate a bonding process? And of course, any other discussion points that anyone would like to discuss. So with that, the only, I guess requirement that I would ask is I will try to facilitate the questions as best as possible. If I do, if you do have a question and you know who you think should respond, please just say that. If you're not sure, just let me know and I can ask the appropriate staff person to address the question. And at that, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you Tammy. I have a legal question and I think Warren, you might be in the same boat that I am. So Thad, looking to you. Thad, are you on?
Yes.
So I own a rental property in the city of Dublin. I believe Warren also owns rental properties in the city of Dublin. Do we need to recuse ourselves from, ourselves from some discussion on this topic? We're not taking action tonight.
Right. Because the nature of what's being discussed is something that would be generally applicable and affect, you know, all people who own any, if the discussion would turn to, for example, rental property registration, it would affect all owners of rental property equally and wouldn't have any direct or, or unique application to either of you. So I'm not, I am not concerned about your participation in discussion this evening.
Thank you.
Then, then depending on what, if there were to be a specific measure actually proposed that would come up for a vote at a later meeting, we can look again to see if that needs to be reassessed.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thad, just so, just so we're being clear with the announcements here, I also own rental property in the, in the city.
All right. Thank you everyone. At this time, I'd like to turn time over for questions, comments, discussion. So if we can start with the, the commission and the board, if you have questions for staff at this time. I'd like to stay focused on the, the discussion topic. So if I could kick it off with number one. A straw poll really. Do the existing regulations address all of your individual concerns about property maintenance and public nuisance?
How do you want us to respond Rebecca? Do you want us to?
Just, yeah, just a straw poll at this point. So just actually informally, Ms. Beal, since you have everyone's name there, could I just have you go down the list and I'll just take a tally and then we'll go down question number two, one by one.
Do you want me to call names and then they'll?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, Ms. Fox?
And at this point, we're just looking for a yes or a no, so that I'll call on you in turn for question number two.
Okay, Ms. Fox?
Is this question one or two? I'm sorry.
This is question number one. Question two on our document is a follow-up to question number two, excuse me, is a follow-up to question number one. So if your answer is no, meaning the existing regulations do not currently address your concerns, then I, when we're going through question number two is the what types of regulations, then we'll go down the list for everyone who says no.
Thank you. All right. I'm a no on question number one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kennedy?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Supalack?
No.
Mr. Schneer?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
Because I don't deal with these, with the regularity that some of you do. I'm, I'm, I don't feel like I can give you an informed answer to some of these existing issues. So I'm, I'm just at this point, I'm listening.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Do you want me to call the rest of the air?
No, I, I think, I think we have sufficient. So for question number two, what types of regulations and or enforcement measures should be investigated to address the concerns that we currently have? So if someone wants to So if someone wants to kick us off with essentially, let's just start at the top, Graham, somebody and say, okay, well, where do you think that their current deficiencies? So for the the board who hasn't been on with us before, typically speaking, in this type of forum, we will have anyone who wishes to make comments or ask questions to staff, raise a hand. And then I'll call on you in turn. So Ms. Fox, I saw your hand go up and you're kind of my go to number one. So why don't you start us off?
I'll start mainly because I chair the public services and this did come before us. My concern about not having enough teeth in our regulations is that aesthetically, we don't address it at all. We also don't have a strong definition between a vacant building and an abandoned building. We don't talk at all in our international code. It talks about unsafe structures and structures that are unfit for habitation. But it really doesn't help us do anything more except board them up and condemn them, possibly condemn them. But we cannot do anything to improve them. Neighbors are constantly saying that abandoned and vacant properties within their neighborhood bring their property values down. Cause concern for safety and well being in the community. Trespassing and sometimes people living in them when when they shouldn't be. So I believe that we need regulations that clearly define vacant and abandoned properties. Responsible and accountable owners have guidelines to ask what they can do with them. And aesthetically, I would like to see these properties to be unrecognizable as anything different than anything else on the street when it comes to maintenance and appearance. I think that there shouldn't be a property that's allowed to go into disrepair on the street by people who live in them, any different than a property owned by someone who doesn't have someone living in it. They should look the same as far as I'm concerned. So that's one of the the reason I think that we need to go ahead with it is with new regulations is because there's nothing in our code right now that gives our code enforcement officers any more power to improve the appearance of these properties. Then the property maintenance code and our existing regulations.
All right. At this time, Ms. Fox, do you have any questions for staff on these items? I'm sure we'll come back to all of them, but do you have any questions for staff on these items?
Question I I have here is do is Greg Jones, do we ever condemn properties?
I don't recall any that we condemned. We we have vacated several properties as unfit for human habitation until such time as the property owner would correct whatever issues that we that we had that required us to vacate them. But I don't recall any that we condemned personally.
I think Councilmember Fox, what what precisely do you mean by condemn? Because it may have, it would have a different meaning perhaps to Greg or to a building official than I think the way we use it.
And and I I I kind of looked through the property maintenance code. There are, there are, you know, section 108 talks about unsafe structure. And it talks about deterioration and neglect. And it goes on to talk about closing them and then it moves on to emergency measures requiring. I don't know that they use the word condemnation, but to a point that they would require demolition. And I'm just wondering in this international property code of 2018, is there more power to move a vacant or abandoned building towards demolition if you know that it is an unsafe structure?
So if if a structure is unsafe, the fact that it is vacant or or that it is occupied is sort of a secondary question, I would say, if it is unsafe and that is brought to the attention of either Greg's Greg and his staff in code enforcement or in the building department, then that can be dealt with and has, you know, we we have taken action within the last two years that I know of for sure to identify a structure that was unsafe. It happened not to be vacant. And went through the process of it being declared a public nuisance. An order being put in place by a court. Ultimately, it was demolished by the city. So that can happen and has happened even for, in as was that case, a non vacant property.
Jane, does that answer your question on condemnation?
I think it does. I mean, I can see it. I can see what the what the wording of it is. I don't believe that that's our biggest problem. I think it's the aesthetics of these longstanding vacant and uncared for buildings. So.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Cram.
Um, yeah, I was gonna piggyback off of what Jane said. I don't think it matters if it's abandoned or vacant. If it's in that terrible condition, it doesn't matter. And actually Thad just brought up exactly what I was thinking of. The house, the guy was still living there. And they went through the legal process and it worked. Now, it'd be great if we could improve the code to be more specific about how to because the court order that Thad mentioned allowed the city to demolish the house. But there's a lot of other aesthetic things wrong with that property that would be really nice to get fixed, but it's not in the court order. They don't have to fix the fence. There there's just other things, you know, at least the the grass is getting mowed, but it's still an eyesore that really we, the city can't do anything about. So the process worked to demolish the building, but there's still other issues. So I think the the code should talk about the, I guess, aesthetics of what can be done in the meantime. And I don't think it is, it should be completely irrelevant if it's vacant or abandoned or I mean, it's just to be any property that looks that way. Because unfortunately, at least in the area that I deal with, we have at least three or four that you would think is vacant, but they're not.
Got it. So Rob Roberts rules here, I'm I don't know that there's really a way for us to continue on with staff questions and not also at the same time going to board discussion. So is there any objection to having public comments if there are any read in at this point before questions to staff or does anyone have questions that are specifics to to staff that don't revolve around board and commission discussion? Seeing no objections, staff, have any public comments been submitted on this item?
We have received four public comments through the website. Two of which I forwarded to all of you. They were a little lengthy and then we've gotten two more later this afternoon.
The two from later this afternoon, could you read those in to the record?
I can certainly do that. This one is from a Balgrefen homeowner at 5000 Hathaway Avenue. And it states that we need stricter nuisance code where homeowners are fined for not maintaining their homes in a timely manner. A few days versus weeks, especially damage that makes them uninhabitable. With the police raid on our rental house in our neighborhood on May 14th, I'm greatly concerned that health, safety and welfare of all current residents in the neighborhood are at risk. Most of the windows have been blown out and plastic trash bags hang in the windows, allowing rain and weather to further damage to home. These should have been boarded up the day they were broken. It only takes one curious child or teenager to venture into the house and an accident occurs. In addition, this impacts all current homeowners' property values as it relates to the beautification and maintenance of the property. It is unacceptable that this has taken the owner this long to fix the windows and front door. Excuses of window companies being backed up and unable to come out to replace them is unacceptable. There are plenty of companies that would do this work in a timely manner. And it's the owner's responsibility to the neighbors and the city to diligently get them repaired. And then the other one is from Jennifer Adams at 318 Glen Meadow Court. And the comment is in regard to the abandoned homes on Monterey, they need to be torn down immediately. They are lowering our property value. Please do not build more apartments as they will do the same to our property values. They are unkempt and overgrown. The open space could be used to extend the park with a splash pad, build a dog park or extend the cemetery to allow new lots.
All right. And then Ms. Husek, would you be willing to read in the Kathy Windau that was included in our email, what was it, earlier today?
Yes, I can certainly do that. So that is, yes, Kathy Windau from 264 Odessa Lane. Good afternoon. I've lived in Waterford Village for 38 years. The houses at the north end of Monterey have been a problem for most of these 38 years. The homes are rundown and look terrible. They do not provide a satisfactory appearance at the entrance to our subdivision from 161. I can't imagine these structures would be tolerated if they were in Bridge Park. I do not know the code requirements that pertain to these houses. But if a code change is needed to remove them, I strongly encourage the city to revise the code. As a longtime citizen of the city of Dublin, I have been so pleased with the way the city has structured new development and maintained the quality of our city. I hope you will continue this expectation of quality by changing code if necessary to address these eyesores and possible health hazards. Thank you.
And then finally, it's like Urban Barnes is our final.
Here we go. Yes, Urban Barnes, 279 Clover Court. And that is also regarding the properties on Monterey. I'm writing concerning the vacated property at Monterey and Route 33, the property has been abandoned now for several years and they continue to deteriorate. Properties were an eyesore before they were abandoned, but have got much worse. When they were occupied, there were tarps on the roof secured by rocks to prevent them from leaking. The properties at the entrance of our neighborhood, Waterford Village and Borders and Park that is utilized by many families and across from the historic Dublin Cemetery. The grounds are fully maintained. It is a site of individuals that aren't supposed to be there. There should be a standard that prevents property owners from allowing abandoned properties from deteriorating to a point of presenting a public safety issue. I do appreciate the attention that Dublin police have given to the property, but they cannot secure it 24/7. I get very concerned about the safety of young children playing at the park. Since there are no streetlights, it makes this area even more dangerous at night and a concern for neighborhood safety. I'm not really sure what to recommend because a fix seems to be apparent. That is to demolish the buildings. I don't know of any neighborhood in Dublin that would consider this condition acceptable. It certainly is not a Dublin standard and it is a few blocks from historic downtown Dublin. I sincerely appreciate Planning and Zoning Commission addressing this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all that we have received.
If any come in during our discussions, staff, if you could turn video on, raise a hand, that sort of thing, so that we can also read those into record. But at this time, I'd like, I'd like to turn it over for questions for staff in conjunction with discussion on this item, Mr. Fishman, if you want to start us off.
Can you hear me?
You're a little quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay, nobody's addressed the fact that many cities, I didn't see it in our ordinance. If a property is is a danger like the one in Monterey, the city can take action and and improve it, tear it down and and then lean the property. I wonder why we haven't looked at that solution.
Mr. Box, do you know if that's been discussed previously, essentially this city taking ownership and enacting a lien on the property?
Not ownership. They don't, they don't take ownership. They simply
Sorry, taking ownership of of the issue, not ownership of the property.
I know that at one time in the last I'll say the last year, but it may have been a little more, it may have been a little less. I know that there were, there have been active discussions with the group that owns that property about preparing the demolition permits that they would to initiate the demolition themselves. And I don't know if Greg has any more or if anybody else in planning staff has more current information than than that. To what Mr. Fishman said, we do have the ability under state law to request the court to find conditions at a property to constitute a public nuisance. That is what happened in the example that I spoke about and that this Mrs. Cram spoke about a few minutes ago. There have been I believe two other properties in the city where we have gone through with that process as well in the three years that I've been involved. And that is putting aside the the mayor's court routes. So it is correct that we can in situations obtain judicial authority to enter a property, abate safety problems up to the point of demolition, demolishing the property and then assessing those costs against the property, which which can sometimes create its own issues, but those are are separate. However, and and one thing is we kind of talk about this in the abstract, I I want to be clear that while there are aesthetic components to the regulations that can be that are in the code now or that could be put into place in Ohio, aesthetics alone are not a sufficient basis to regulate. It has to be aesthetics plus health or aesthetics plus safety or general welfare. And and oftentimes we can demonstrate that through the effect that it has on housing stock around it. Or police runs to the property, that sort of thing. But anytime we take action, we have to find an owner, obtain good service, go through the legal process and get a court order to to take action. Short of a building that is imminently about to fall in, which I don't think that's what is really our our problem that we're driving at is these properties that may be standing just fine, but that look bad and that have those negative value effects on their on their neighborhoods. But the one thing we have to deal with as a governing agency is ensuring that we follow a sufficient process to to give property rights they're due so that the city has not been sued. So that's why we, you know, it often isn't a matter of days, it's a matter of weeks or months to to get results.
So so just one comment there. And I know that a lot of our conversation is on aesthetics and we're talking about, you know, property values. And and while that isn't disclosed in that whole quiet enjoyment of one's personal property, the insurance, the personal property rights. If if I recall correctly, each one of these public comments and every comment that the board and commission have made thus far, though aesthetics may come into play, it's aesthetics plus, just as you said before, it's the, you know, if I'm looking at one public commentator and it's the you know, it looks terrible, but it's also the site for a bunch of people who aren't supposed to be there. And at the same time, thanking police for their quick response. So that's kind of a triple play on that particular comment. But as we go through and discuss these items and brainstorm on what we can do, just keeping in mind that while it's very easy to point to, you know, it's a terrible looking house, making sure we're coupling that with, you know, just because I don't like that the the house next door painted their their, the front of their house fuchsia in a non HOA environment, doesn't give me the right to deprive someone else of their property rights. It is the the house next door is falling down and there are people going in, doing what they should. It is the, the house next door is falling down, and there are people going in doing what they shouldn't do in not their property. So, Mr. Fishman, back to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have had experiences. I've never been served, but, but, but I, when I belong to the apartment association, people shared with me the fact that, that in the city of Columbus, for example, if you just don't mow your grass and it gets so high, they can come mow it and then lean your property. So a minor thing like mowing grass, and if it, if it need, if gutters are falling off, they can repair the gutters and so on. So I just said, I don't see anything that, like that in the Dublin code, but I don't think they even need a court order for that. They send a letter and say, if it's not mowed at a certain time, or your gutters aren't fixed, or whatever, then, then we will do it and you will be lean for it. Okay?
And, and I don't even think it needs to go to the extent of a lien. We owned a house in Columbus and bought it, you know, in that situation where it needed some help. And we received a bill because the city had come by and mowed the property. There was no lien. It was just, we received a bill in the mail saying you didn't do it, so therefore, but had we not paid it, it could have gone to the extent of the lien. So, Mr. Box.
If you had not paid it, it would have gone to the lien. And the city does do that with respect to mowing.
Are there any other provisions? Are there any other provisions other than knowing that the city could, you know, in this case where something is, you know, falling over where it is a safety issue? Do we have to go the legal route?
The city does not have to. So if it was something that was falling, the city could act in an emergency basis, and then the property owner would be afforded a post, they would have a post-action right to a hearing on that. To the example of putting up gutters and that sort of thing, I'm not familiar with any time when the city has made those sort of basic repairs to a property, either with a court order or not. Usually when it gets to a court order stage, at least the way we've approached it in situations where I've been involved is the court orders the property owner to do it first and gives them a reasonable period of time to do that. Fourteen days, twenty one days, depending on the time of year and nature of the repair. And then if they don't do that, we go back to the court and get an order allowing self-help. But that has been in the form of demolition, or in the form of removing rubbish from the property and disposing of it, and not repairs, per se. Is it, can you think of any other examples, Greg?
We have used a contractor in the past, say, we had a vacant structure that needed secured, and we contacted property owner, didn't get secured. Then we have brought our contractor in to, to secure the property. That's what, that's, I'm talking exterior, I'm not talking any, any, I'm not talking entering the property. The next year, the property, put the plywood up on the windows, doors, whatever needed done to secure the property. Of course, you mentioned the mowing. If we do, we've also used contractors for trash and debris on a property that if it hasn't been picked up, it hasn't been cleaned, we've used our, our mowing contractor to go in and correct that situation. But that, that's the only instances that I can recall. We've actually used a third party to do it and correct an issue.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman, did you have any other questions?
About Dublin, I was talking about the city of Columbus, that, that forced repairs when the owner didn't respond, and Lisa, the one I remember is gutters coming down, and they're supposed to go into the ground and out to the street, and they weren't. They were just hanging there, and some way they got fixed. It was in a neighborhood that I have a house. So, so I just wonder if we can do something like that, that if it doesn't get done, we get it done in our, in our ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Schnack.
Thank you. Mr. Box, I wonder if you could elaborate on, I'm a little confused on the aesthetics only sort of issue, because examples, and maybe just picking up on Mr. Fishman's comment. Let's say it's a gutter, and it doesn't pose, I guess it could easily pose some issues with respect to drainage, et cetera, but it just looked bad. You know, what would we have the authority to deal with that, or would that be an aesthetic issue? And when it was, the example that was given earlier in the picture, and there was a discussion about, for example, wood versus plexiglass versus glass. If the building was otherwise secure, but it was secure with plexiglass, and we, I mean, I'm sorry, secured with plywood, and we'd all rather see it, you know, fit in more and secure with something more akin to the neighborhood. But arguably, wouldn't that just be aesthetic? And so the question is, in that example of, in the slide of, you know, I'm Monterey, I think that was Monterey or whatever, where there was plywood, what is, what do you think the limit of our authority is? Because sort of talking through this.
Well, something like the gutter, which is, and Greg will correct me if I'm wrong, but gutters and the dealing with water coming off of the structure is part of the property maintenance code. And while it looks bad, and that's probably what we see most immediately, ultimately, the failure of that, of a gutter and downspout system affects the integrity of the, of the structure itself. So that would be a permissible, and is a permissible, widely accepted building component to regulate, just like peeling or flaking paint. Yeah, it looks bad, but the reason that the property maintenance code has issue with it is because it allows that penetration, infiltration of water or pests that damages the structure itself. The plywood is, is an interesting one, because on surface, it has aesthetic shortcomings. And at the state level, what they have done, at least with regard to homes that are under foreclosure and have been found to be vacant, is they prohibited the foreclosing entity from using plywood to secure the structure. And the reason that they've done that is because there was concern particularly with the foreclosure fallout from the last great recession, that these start to multiply and create a sort of community blighting effect. So I'm afraid that I've talked a lot, and I haven't really answered your question, but it's, it's that classic law school, you know, it depends answer. And like, like Ms. Call said, you know, the color of the paint on the house or something like that probably is just aesthetic. But plywood, the sort of connotation that goes along with that for the rest of the neighborhood, these sort of secondary effects of things that are unattractive are really what give the government the hooks to regulate.
So, Mr. Box, a follow-up question on that. Since the plywood going up on the windows is not for the sake of adding plywood, it's to secure the home. Do we, as a city, have the authority to regulate what type of securing happens at that home? So not, we're prohibiting plywood, but we are requiring that when an abandoned home, when a vacant home, whatever class we want to put on that, when it is determined to be abandoned, it must be secured in a specific manner. And that could be plexiglass, it could be, you know, whatever that manner is determined, but can we set the manner in which the securing happens?
My opinion would be yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Rebecca, I actually work with the city of Columbus land banks. That's part of my daily job, is securing properties. And one of the ways we do do it is we require the thickness of plywood, instead of just saying plywood, because some people are using the thin stuff, it would warp immediately whenever it rained. So I think ours is five eights off the top of my head. We also do the demolition of properties and assess the cost of the demolition to the property, and then when they don't pay, take it to the environmental court. The property becomes so underwater with that price assessment to it, that it ends up reverting back into the city. It's a little bit longer process, obviously, but that's one of the ways we acquire many properties in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Cotter, did you have a question?
I did, because I was just trying, I'm catching up a little bit here, since this is one of my first ones. But if I look at, if I look at the code in oh, zero seventy six, it feels like it gives us some a bit of teeth, because it talks a bit about trash, failure to keep the exterior in good condition. And then, and then there are corrective actions by the municipal, by the municipal officials that allow violations to be escalated up in a certain way. I'm just trying, it feels like there's stuff in here that if we, it's a very, it's a bit vague, but if you take the vagueness and try to put that thing, I was just, Mr. Box, it looks like there's stuff, or from, from staff, looks like there's areas in here that are already there that could be used if we find a way to say, what does it mean by being disrepair? Or what does it mean to be having too much debris, keeping the exterior of a residential or commercial in good condition and well-maintained? I mean, is it sitting there that we could just strengthen these few paragraphs and few subsections that would give a little bit more teeth and give a bit more area for it to hang your hat on, that it's a bit more focused? That might be the staff. I'm not sure who.
Yes. Yeah, I saw Mr. Box, like, lean in to touch his unmute button. All right, Mr. Superlack, do you want to piggyback on that? And then we'll go back to Mr. Box.
Yes, generally. So, right, where Warren started to go with, I want to say, the city at some point taking over and potentially doing some work, and then applying liens back onto the the homeowner and, you know, and, and or, I don't know when that, that gets to a point that I don't know if that even progresses in any situation, in any jurisdiction, anywhere to sort of like an eminent domain, kind of just full ownership takeover on behalf of the city, if said, if said owner is not being forthcoming with the financial obligations they've, they've sort of been burdened with. But I think what we're saying there is this path, whatever it has to do, it has to have an escalation path. Right? That, that sort of allows at the highest level some measure of court-applied stuff. I'm afraid, even though we're, we're sitting here, that's going to be really careful, you know, Thad's on here, that's going to be really careful, careful, careful crafting of all, of all those things to get to that path. I will say, so Tammy, we're, forgive us, we are, we are learning into this issue ourselves quite a bit, and we do not know this stuff as, as well as you all do on staff. We have not participated around it quite as long, so that I hear us actually sort of clamoring for exactly what Rebecca started getting to. I think you cited something, you know, I mean, do we make a modification to the, to the maintenance code that sort of applies material restrictions to how places are boarded, are boarded up? I think that's really applicable. Hold on just a second. I got a dog trying to get in the room.
So I'll let Mr. Superlack finish when he gets back, but I do want to level set, because this is somewhat of an informal discussion. So Mark, we'll get right back to you in just a second. Because this is somewhat of an informal discussion, and because we seem to have consensus among the commission that we're not really satisfied with where the code is right now. I believe we've addressed, we're concerned about the aesthetics, and, so the aesthetics and the, the safety measures, the aesthetics and the destruction of adjacent properties, the aesthetics and the water intrusion, the aesthetics and the bug infestations, those types of things. Because we want to ensure that individual property owners are responsible for their own property and do not negatively impact their neighbors. I believe that we have enough direction unless we're missing something, and please clarify if I am missing something, and Warren, I'll get right to you. I believe we have a significant amount of information for staff to go back and discuss, but we do have a few other items that we haven't gotten to yet on this particular topic. And those are the registration for vacant properties. Do we feel that a separate registration path is necessary? If a property is vacant, and that property owner maintains their property to the level of the neighborhood, ought they to register that it is vacant? Do we term that it's vacant after a day, after a week, after thirty days? How do we determine if it's vacant? And do we distinguish vacant from abandoned? If so, how would we want them to register, understanding that we have property records and we know who the legal owner is on every property? Should we investigate bonding requirements? And those are different from the discussions that we've been having about leaning only after we've sent bills and the bills have gone delinquent for the different, you know, the gutter property, or the lawn mower property, or the demolition property, and then anything else that we need to consider. So, Mark, before I go on to Warren, Mark, since you were interrupted by the dog, I'll go back to you so you can finish.
Thank you, thank you kindly. By the way, everything you just articulated, obviously, the, a lot of us are touching on vacant versus, versus abandoned, the timeline associated with that. And I, I'm afraid staff has to spend some time sort of probably doing precedent checks around the country on that type of stuff, because the other, the other part of that is, we have commercial, we have commercial facilities, commercial rental properties that do go vacant for long periods of time. They are not necessarily a problem, but, but so that duration and that timeline, there's stipulations there that have to be careful. The, I would agree, the registration and bonding is still on that escalation, escalation path, and I think we're clearly saying we need a better escalation path. I'm also going to add a couple of things here, because I think we're sort of dancing around them. One, one was, we talk about boarding up as a security measure. And I think Thad, you kind of touched on this. Is it, is it is it a health hazard, and is it vacant? Might be two separate questions, but, but we also, I think, said with this case study in particular, that here, these houses are boarded up with temporary solutions, and yet there are inhabitants. So the temporary solution at this point is not necessarily temporary. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm inferring from it? In which case, there, there could be some definition around temporary and the temporary boarding process in this that, that allows, you know, a certain measure of boarding up for, for certain, certain periods. And then, you know, if it's inhabited, there's another trigger that allows us to sort of deal with it separately. The other thing, Thad, I thought you touched on something about an argument that is a viable argument in other jurisdictions, I think it was state of Ohio, about blighting of neighborhoods with widespread, widespread boarding of certain things. And in this case study, I'm just calling this out to all of us, there are, I want to say, eight properties, four on each side. They are, right, and, and two of them have been removed. They are a vacant lot at this point. Six of them still remain. All six of them are in this condition, boarded up with, with, again, temporary signs that are no longer temporary at all. So I don't know if there's, there is opportunity to build in, like, again, to the vacant and abandoned, the timelines and durations, and some measure of temporary solve versus permanent solves, those types of things. I certainly think there's opportunity to refine definitions there. I would be all in for, all in favor, by the way, I think it's Patty, I don't see her on here anymore. I'd be all in favor for some of the provisions, the modifications to the code that were articulated. I'd be in favor of entertaining some of the escalation paths that have been articulated.
Thank you, Mr. Superlack. Mr. Fishman?
A couple of things. I think Mark has made some excellent points. I think we have to have a definite path toward the solution. Toward the solution. It has to escalate toward the solution in the ordinance. Okay, so we know we're doing. Number two, we talked a lot about boarding up buildings. First of all. Plexiglass does not secure a building. Okay, if some kid wants to break into a, a house that's been plexiglass. A good hammer will get him in. Okay, three quarter inch plywood won't. But we haven't talked about technology, and you can secure a house with alarm systems and, 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 and cameras and all those kind of things. That make the house not look vacant. The other thing I'm against is registering vacant houses, because it'll be public knowledge. And, and, and people already, it's all, you're already registered with rental houses, by the way. If you have a rental house, you're supposed to legally in Franklin County. Registered as a rental house, and, and that's bad enough, okay, because uh where I get calls and I get, you know, things that. There's a rental house in a neighborhood and so on. So, so I think that, that, that um we have to look at that carefully, but I, we haven't talked anything about technology. Securing a house, and, and I know that I've done a pretty good job of doing that, and you would not know if I have a rental house that's empty. For thirty days, that it's empty, and, and because we secure it electronically. So, anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Brian?
Yes, we've been focusing on um residential, which I think is important, but I also don't want to lose the fact that there are some. I would go so far as to say, close to abandoned buildings um that are commercial properties in the historic area of Dublin. So I want to make sure that we're sensitive. I don't, if we start seeing boarded up buildings in, in downtown. Um, that sends a really bad message to what's happening to an area that we're trying to revitalize, so. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't forget that there are commercial properties as well.
Thank you, Ms. Brian. So I believe, uh, you know, and back to Mark Subalax's um comments earlier. I believe that right now where the board and commission are, are not. Specifically satisfied with the code where it sits. We are concerned with impacts on neighbors, public safety, we are concerned with um. Everything that comes along with properties that are not occupied by uh property owners or designees. And there are, in our minds, distinct differences between residential use and a commercial use. We do see that we need some type of escalation path, and that may be multi-threaded, in that if there is a property that. Is uh headed toward the condemnation route, that the city ought to have a path where. The, the residents and the city as a whole benefits from that property being condemned in an expedient manner. If properties are a, a safety issue, if they are aesthetically unpleasing at the same time that. They're in disrepair, that we ought to have some type of path forward that. Is also expedient. So if that means that the city goes out and mows the lawn. The city uh sends a notice to the property owner to repair a gutter or to remove debris. And if that doesn't happen, then the city can take an expedient path. If it is appropriate, rather than going the mayor's court route. And then also the judicial route, because that is also an option. So if we could have staff research, determine to Mr. Subalax's point, uh duration, timing. If there is something that a clear definition or a wide, wide, widely adopted definition of what constitutes a vacant property versus an abandoned property. What constitutes something that is on its way to condemnation versus something that is public nuisance versus something that is a public safety issue? If that can be presented along with that clear escalation path, that may be bidirectional, then I think that we would. Uh, have a good next steps. Are there any? Mr. Schneer?
Thank you. I, I would just add, I, I'd love the staff to do some research on. The uh extent or limitations on this aesthetic issue, because it's really a fuzzy one, and anything we do. We want to make sure it would withstand legal challenge, and geez, that could just be. Really a tough one. Um, and I know we've got. Beyond competent legal counsel to assist us, but um. I, I think I just would find that really very, very helpful.
Thank you. And luckily, we're, we're not the first ones to face this issue. Other cities have gone through this, and while we are not the Flints and the Detroit's, and I don't mean to pick on Michigan specifically, but those are the two freshest in my mind. Uh, we, we have some of the same issues, and we have neighbors who we want to keep happy. Ms. Kennedy, did you have a comment?
I did. Um, it's just on the um, for the escalation side, does this become, and this is probably outside of bounds for this discussion, but does this become a financial burden for the city? That's accounted for in some way? Do we even? That in this discussion or not necessarily?
I, I would, um, that is good question, uh, Ms. Kennedy. I, I think for purposes of this. These bodies. You know, the question is sort of what is the nature of the policy that is desired? Uh, ultimately, these are recommending bodies and. It would be a council, the council will have to take into account the fact that. As we go down, you know, if we mow the lawn, there's a cost. If we demolished a house, there's a cost that is. Put out upfront. By the city, and hopefully is recovered either by invoicing the owner or. By attaching the property, but um. You're correct, it doesn't come for free. On the escalation path. Uh, just so that everybody is, is, you know, reading from the same book. My understanding from talking with Greg is that it often starts with an informal contact. Ninety-eight percent of things are, are resolved prior to filing in mayor's court. Mayor's court is usually attempted once before going to environmental court, so. Because environmental court ultimately is where you can get those injunctive orders for people to. Repair or um. You know, the, the city go in and, and. Remove the property or demolish the property, so that is um done as practice. It's not. Necessarily codified in all that much detail. So that's, that's all I, I have on that, unless I don't want to speak for Greg, though.
It said out of bounds, Thad, that's okay.
No, I, I don't know, I don't want to say that it's out of bounds, but I don't think that. For the role that these bodies play, I don't want. I don't want, um. I think we'd rather have the conversation of, you know, what would we do in an ideal world? And then. Have the, the monetary discussion at a, probably at a council level. Because they make a budget.
Certainly. And we are considerate, because the decisions that we make do impact other people, which is why we're discussing the liens and the. And the invoicing, but at the same time, you know, we stay, we try to stay in our lane. Ms. Box?
I have to unmute. Um, a couple of things, and I think it's important that, that Greg maybe um comment on them. In the two thousand eighteen uh municipal um maintenance code. If you look under, and I know that everyone didn't get a copy of this, so I, I have a printed copy. Protective treatment is required on exterior surfaces. And that, and they talk about no chipped or peeling paint. Um, they actually talk about all the aesthetics that we're talking about inside the public maintenance code or the um international maintenance code. So I think if we were to um. Use the letter of the law on this, we could get some of those things done. Um, so I'd ask Greg about that. The other thing is Marysville, Ohio has a vacant property maintenance code. That they use right now, and one of um, one of the things that they require. They require registration, but we only have something like, I think, twelve vacant properties in the city when it comes to. Recognizable houses or those in the historic district, and they require that. Um, let me get this. I lost my page. They require that the building be closed up within forty-eight hours if windows are broken. They require that doors and windows and any structure that would allow uh someone to enter it be remedied within thirty days. They actually uh put. Very specific requirements on vacant properties, and they must be put back into. What once, what would, one would say. Appearances that are similar to the neighborhood within thirty days. So we could ask for that if that's what this. Commission would recommend, uh, you could ask for those kinds of specifics. And then the other thing I wanted to, to mention is um. There are other public nuisances besides aesthetics that I would ask Thad about. Uh, public health, meaning keeping like over so many animals within a property. We don't talk about that at all. Uh, public safety, um. Storage of explosives, things like, I, I'm looking at examples across the United States where they've actually called um these. Uh, public nuisances in categories such as public peace. We talk about noise a little bit, but there are um. There are a variety of ways that, that the public is um bothered, their comfort is bothered, their convenience is bothered. Um, those also are issues that we don't really talk about in our code. Not that I want to move in that direction right now, but I think that it's, it's very common. That maintaining a property at a level that's um common in the neighborhood, and I would ask Thad this. For the public welfare, the public convenience, um, and the public. Health and wellbeing would, would apply to being very specific in how you expect a property be, to be maintained. Is that? Is that reasonable?
I'm not, I'm not sure I totally followed your question on. Having a requirement that it be maintained to the level of the. Neighborhood around it or common to the neighborhood around it. Are you asking if we could make that an enforceable code provision?
Well, I, I can't help but wonder if it isn't, because if you look at the property, International Property Maintenance Code, section three oh four. They literally spell out that all exterior surfaces, all the trim, the paint, the gutters, the masonry joints, the metal surfaces shouldn't have rust. Uh, oxidation stains should be removed. Structural members should be maintained and not allowed to deteriorate. I mean, it's more than. It's more than simple, you know, keep it locked up. It, they speak about all of that. So I would think that that is an aesthetic issue, or they wouldn't call it out.
Well, those are, those are both aesthetic and go to the integrity of the structure, um, and those are incorporated. By the city's adoption of the um International Property Maintenance Code and, you know, I. Greg's out there every day, um, so he could probably speak to more examples, but I know of at least one example where. You know, I, I've been involved with Greg and writing to people and saying, hey, you know, you have. Peeling paint on your door jams. It needs to be fixed under section da, 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 the IPMC, and, and ultimately those people. Did, you know, that's, that's part of that ninety-eight percent. So yes, we can do that and um. You know, the level. At which that becomes something that a person is cited for can be. Uh, I suppose tuned up if that's the. Inclination of, of. The commission and, and council. Um, I don't know how. I don't, I'm not as familiar with what. Greg sees out on the street or what, what all of you um see on the street on a day-to-day basis, but it is in the code. Um, the, the items that you mentioned like um. Number of pets, um, sometimes that's something that the Board of Health will get involved with if they are called. Where it's an interior issue, and maybe it's creating an odor or something, or, or just an unsafe. Uh, environment for the inhabitants, but there's. Sort of a different um government agency that takes the lead on those interior health-based and sanitation-based. Components and, and things like the public peace. There is provision in Ohio Revised Code that we have used. I've not used it specifically in Dublin, um, but. For example, if there are felony drug offenses that have been. Found on a property, that can be cause of action for declaration of a public nuisance. If there's. Uh, solicitation or prostitution on a property, that can be a cause of action for public nuisance under the state code, and so. Something that would be available to us, um, if those circumstances were present. Um, I believe. Several years ago, uh, a hotel in Dublin was. Sued on that basis and ultimately closed down, so.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't really mean to do that. I just, I just want to know if it's, if, if it's in. In the property maintenance, International Property Maintenance Code, and it's, should we call it out additionally for aesthetics? And since it's there, it seems like we could call it out. Inside our own Dublin Code of Ordinances, specifically that these are the kinds of aesthetic expectations. For prop, appropriate property maintenance within the city.
Well, if, if I may.
Sure.
The, the. Everything in the International Property Maintenance Code, I'm not talking about the Public Nuisance Code, one fifty-three oh seven six, but. In particular. Excuse me, the International Property Maintenance Code, it is. For the continuing maintenance of property, if, if, in other words, if the Property Maintenance Code. Which it does, mentions flaking peeling paint. It's not because of the aesthetics of flaking. Flaking peeling paint, it's because not having a proper coding on the structure itself is going to, going to. Cause the, the wood to rot or, and things of that nature. Any, anything that's specific to the Property Maintenance Code is. You, we can take that literally. It's property maintenance, it's, is preventing the deterioration of the structure. Is preventing the uh, if a roof's leaking. The, the fact that uh the shingles are off. Is not due to aesthetics, so I'm drawing by and say, oh, the shingles are off. It's, the water is going to infiltrate into the structure and cause uh damage to the uh. The decking of the roof, and will also cause damage to the uh, the ceiling in the, in the unit as it goes through, so everything. On the Property Maintenance Code is specific to maintenance, not, not aesthetics. Per se, and that's where we could get into. Our public nuisance regulations, we could tie that into aesthetically, uh aesthetics, and I don't know, uh. I think Thad mentioned in keeping with the uh, the, the neighborhood, you know, um. Aesthetics, um. Say, say mowing of grass, you know, that's not aesthetics, that's tied back to public safety, health, health, safety and welfare. Simply do become animals, insects, uh mosquitoes, things of that nature, so we, we really need to tie. Everything that we do into the public health, safety and welfare in some manner.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
All right, so staff, do you have any questions or do you have enough direction to start like work and research?
Um, I, I think that your, your thoughts have been excellent and thank you for bringing ideas to the table. That's always even more exceptional. So I think we have enough to proceed with some direction. So, um, whether that comes back to this body or moves forward to city council, um, that's, I guess some discussion we'll have on our part. But I do appreciate your, your time and again, your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Supalack, do you have one more comment?
Um, yes, and this is, we don't have to discuss this, but I guess there's also, I'm, I'm just going to one case study that we all drove by in Dublin. It, it was at, by the Leo Alfred Jewelers set back off of, off of thirty-three. And it was not vacated or abandoned necessarily. It sat once the sort of oh eight, oh seven stuff, you know, crashed. There was a steel structure sitting back there. It's now become the sunrise of Dublin, set back off, off of, of thirty-three. Um, and it sat there for a good handful of years, paused in construction. So I, I think some of the consideration has to also think through that side of this equation just relative to everything else.
Thank you. All right. Next on our list for discussion is our second case. This is sign code update twenty dash zero ninety-eight ABMC. We're looking at this application as a request for an informal discussion regarding an Ohio constitutional statutory and case law decision requiring that sign regulations remain content neutral. So it looks like this one is dual purpose for staff presentation. Guys haven't gotten enough of us tonight. So Mr. Boggs, Ms. Ralch.
Well, I don't have a formal presentation for this. I'm hoping Thad can sort of introduce the topic. Um, this is related to a Supreme Court case, uh, that, and again, wanting our regulations to align with that. It is related to temporary signs. So you'll notice that the draft code that you got has permanence, it's our entire sign code. Uh, but we're only talking about temporary signs. So they're very intertwined. So I don't, again, I want to make sure our discussion, I'm sure Thad will make sure we're, we're on point too, is really related to the temporary sign aspect of this and how we are proposing to modify our code to be in alignment with the decision of this. I'll let Thad take it away.
Sure. So essentially, uh, anybody who is in the land use, um, space may be familiar by now with the case of Reed versus the town of Gilbert. It was decided in twenty fifteen, uh, by the US Supreme Court and stands for the proposition that a regulation that distinguishes between signs and, and in the facts of the case, these were temporary non-commercial signs, uh, where the town treated them differently based on their content. Uh, so directional signs were regulated differently than, um, ideological signs, which were regulated differently than political signs. Uh, there were in fact, um, something like a dozen different classifications, uh, based on the content of a sign that caused the town to treat the sign differently. And what the Supreme Court said was, under the First Amendment, the government cannot make these content-based distinctions unless they satisfy strict scrutiny. And I will tell you, uh, that str, strict scrutiny is often referred to as being strict in theory and fatal in fact. And, uh, in the municipal law world, uh, the consensus was that the vast majority, if not all, local sign codes probably ran afoul of this decision in one respect or another. But it is, it is something that has taken a lot of digestion to really address because these classifications, uh, even if not on a content-based theory are important. Uh, there may be reasons why someone needs a sign out while they're selling their home versus, um, you know, during a yard sale or something. So as you go through the proposed revisions that have been provided in your packet, you'll see that instead of dealing with the content of the sign per se, we often have changed it to deal with time. Because time, place and manner restrictions are more easily justified under the First Amendment. As an aside, uh, the Reed case has probably been, not been applied as expansively in the field of signs as it has been in other areas for speech. So, um, a lot of First Amendment protection has been extended to panhandling based on the theories espoused in Reed. But there has, there has not been expansions of Reed, um, in the sign realm at the Supreme Court level or even in, in our Sixth Circuit level that has, uh, the regional jurisdiction for Ohio uh, in the five years since that case was decided. So, um, when we took this to Community Development Committee in November sixth, uh, or on November sixth of last year, we had a discussion about this and the committee asked us to bring this back to these bodies. Um, because you are involved in the regulation of signs. And, uh, the, the real effort has been to remove content-based distinctions while maintaining a, um, framework to regulate signage, preserving, uh, our ability to wayfind with signage to avoid visual clutter, um, to maintain, um, rights of way free of, of unwanted signage and to, um, address certain specific problems like temporary signs that aren't temporary. So, um, that is sort of the effort here in a nutshell. And, um, happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. All right. And so, uh, Mr. Boggs, just clarification, we are dealing with, uh, code section one fifty-three dot one fifty-nine exclusively. Is that correct in the attach pack? Uh, that's temporary signs is the title.
That is the most applicable portion of this draft code. So the depth, there's, the definitions at the beginning have been modified as well. And then we also have, I believe it's one fifty-three, one five-seven, that's sort of the general, uh, requirements that would apply to both, which relate to location, design, colors, those types of things. So those apply to both, but the specific, uh, regulations that Thad was discussing regarding temporary signs is that one fifty-three point one five nine.
All right. And I, I did send an email. I was on the city council in my previous city prior to moving to Dublin. And we got to deal with the Gilbert discussion almost immediately because we were challenged as well. So I, I emailed over that for, it's just for reference. Ms. Fox.
Just to give us some, a central reference point as to why this even came up. Council discussed the proliferation of these large for lease commercial signs that, um, are, I don't know how many square foot, four by six square, you know, I don't know, four by six. They stay up forever. I, I drove down Fran's Road, there's fourteen of them on one roadway between rings and one sixty-one. So the real reason that we're discussing temporary signs is because of that nuisance of having them up for so long, they never come down. So I don't know, uh, Jenny, how important all the other signage conversation is with temporary signs. But that is the concern and that to me is where the discussion could start.
Great. And we, and in the, can everybody hear me? I was told it's hard to hear me, so I'll try to speak louder. Um, so on page thirteen, letter H, it calls out non-residential sale or leasing period signs. And that speaks to the type of sign that you're speaking of, Ms. Fox. Um, and obviously included in here, it does have size limitations and location in here, which are consistent with what is in the current code. We have added, uh, to Thad's point, a duration period to this and modified it since the committee saw it last. So we said they can be displayed no more than a hundred eighty days in a calendar year and to be removed within fourteen days of sale, rental or lease, um, to get to the committee's discussion on that. So that's, uh, again, we can talk through that one in particular, but we definitely wanted to make sure that we addressed the committee's concern on that particular issue. And this has been something that's been discussed for many years. Um, it is challenging because, you know, tenants turn over in commercial buildings on a regular basis. So sometimes it is hard to know, um, and to keep track of, you know, how that, how that works, um, and the timing of that. But we have added that in here to give us a baseline of a timeframe, so it's not in perpetuity, your point.
Ms. Cram.
Um, and related to that, in the, in the, um, section that Jenny just talked about, I'm wondering if, are we able to add, um, specifically, uh, like the location of the sign? So, um, I'm getting at is those big boards, the for lease boards, right? So we, what I've seen people do is they will take it down and they'll move it about twenty feet further, like in a different location on the property and it's still there. Um, but it's a new sign. So I don't, I'm wondering if we can add to H that they can only have like one sign per parcel. And that sign can only, they can only have one sign on, anywhere on that parcel for a hundred and eighty days. So then that way they'd be required to take it down and not just move it to the other side of the parcel or to the other side of the building or something like that.
We do in H right now, limit the number of one sign per street frontage. So in the case where they're, they're moving at twenty feet, i- it's still the same, the same or a different sign, but it is one sign on the parcel at any given time for a period. And, and I know that commercial properties can sometimes be vacant for half a year. But a hundred and eighty days is a very long time.
But those, those signs stay up for years. I mean, you know, twenty years, those signs have been there. We, we, when I was on PNC, we talked about some of the parcels where those were still up. So.
And, and I wonder if we could do contiguous days, so it can be up for so long contiguous and, you know.
But they would take it, they would literally take it down for one day and then put it back up.
Yeah, Mr. Supalack.
That, to get around it. So I think we need to add a little more teeth to H.
Oh, agreed. And I think we're an or condition. You can have whatever the, the duration is, let's say it's a hundred and eighty days. But of that hundred and eighty days, only ninety days contiguous or a hundred and twenty days contiguous. You know, uh, so that if they take it down for one day and they put it back up, guess what? Your clock didn't reset. You're still a hundred and eighty days is the only allowable time. And I, I, every time I say a hundred and eighty days, my gut hurts a little bit.
This, uh, it, this, this, and this argument does bag a certain question too. Even, even at that, if I take it down and, and I get, I mean, some of those, some of those lease signs are just, again, to the point of plywood. They're just plywood and they're, you know, with a face on it. And so if I get a new face, does that constitute another sign, um, type of thing? So I, I'm not sure we're touching on this, you know, nuance that people, a few people will try and game. But I, I maybe the question is to sort of Thad, how do we make that so it's not, so they can't really game it and it's, you know, clear?
So what if we just switch the vernacular? Signage may be displayed on the parcel for up to a hundred and eighty days. Not the sign may be displayed, but signage may be displayed on the property.
Exactly. That's, that was, that's what needs to be there.
Yep, Ms. Fox.
Um, there are suggestions and, and, and I think, I think this is worth researching. Um, some, uh, or some ordinance say that they, one, they limit the size. I think we need to talk about size. I think they're too large. Um, some are on corners, so they put them on two free street frontages. The number of days, you can say a maximum of fourteen days uh, on occurrence to some, or some allow up to thirty with only allowing it no more than four times a year and not necessarily consecutive. So here's, and also on H, it's a sixteen square foot window sign for goodness sake. We don't allow that anywhere. I mean, why would we allow something that large? It seems to me if you have a twenty-four foot or however many foot, square foot it is out on the street, why would you need one in the window too? I'm just wondering, you know, how lenient do you, does this commission want us to be? And that's what council's asking on these commercial lease signs. How big, how long, how many?
So, um, help me understand Jane, the window sign, because I, I'm reading H and I'm seeing the pre-standing sign, but I'm not seeing. So individual tenant spaces within a parcel are allowed a window sign no longer, that, no larger than sixteen square feet. Is that what you're referring to?
Right, that's what I'm referring to. So they get the window sign and they get the big sign out front in the lawn.
Um, I would, I would argue that they get one. You can choose a window or you can choose a frontage, but you don't get both.
I guess that's the question I'm asking that I'd like the, this, you know, the commission to answer because you all see these signs. You've got to find a way to control.
I totally support one sign per parcel.
That's the only exception. I, I would probably offer one sign per parcel up to so many square feet. Because if you're dealing with, you know, a cardinal health type, uh, parcel where it is an entire block of property, then yeah, I'm, I might consider doing two signs on something that's that large. But if it's a single commercial property, I, I see no reason for it to be more than one. Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Call. Um, was there any, this is a question for staff. Was there any study done on, um, consistency of this policy given, uh, neighboring communities as well? Um, just as far as benchmarking goes? Is this with Hilliard or Marysville or whatever, like the surrounding prop, surrounding communities?
Most of the surrounding communities, to my knowledge, have not really tried to grapple with the Reed issues. From a sort of what's the appropriate size type of, of issue? I don't know. Um, there was a consultant that the city has worked with and I see Jenny nodding her head. So I don't know if she can speak anymore to that or.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to see if they did any benchmarking as part of theirs. My, my guess is they took our existing code and modified it to, um, to sort of change the nomenclature. We could definitely do that as we move forward. We could look at what other, uh, surrounding jurisdictions are doing to see how they tackle this project or this problem, excuse me. So we could, we could do that before we bring something back to you to see if this is in line with that.
Yeah, just curious. Again, that's, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to sign you up for more homework, but I'm just curious if there's anything else that's been done that we could use as a benchmark.
Yeah, because.
Maybe no.
Just as a matter of the history of how this, the, the longer-term history of this is that it has been a project on the radar because of the Reed issues or some time, um, we took it, I believe it was to council, maybe it was a committee of council. But I remember the comment that Ms. Fox alluded to specifically came from then Mayor Peterson. And so that's what led us to include the, the real estate, um, leasing period restriction, um, when we did it. Because it, the, the initial focus in this draft was to make sure it was content neutral, neutral with respect to temporary non-commercial signs.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Um, so that we're not going off of just the vocal minority, if we are the minority, could I get a straw poll of the commission and the board on limiting, uh, for lease parcel signs or at least directing staff to investigate limiting to a single parcel? Okay, looks like I have majority there. And then is there consideration for based on parcel size, allowing more than one? And if so, are you looking at any particular size or looking for staff to provide some direction? Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I, I, we haven't talked about, many of those signs, as a couple of people mentioned, are perpetual signs. Two years ago, I was looking for an office and I called signs. I remember a couple on Sawmill Road and they said, oh, we haven't had a vacancy in a year, but, but we can help you. We've got some buildings, you know, Hamilton Avenue that we can help you with. So they're perpetual signs. I, I, I think that we haven't talked about making them more attractive and smaller and, 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 and instead of a piece of plywood on two poles. We make, we, we, we seem to control aesthetics of every other sign in Dublin. And I don't know, other cities have done this, something that's small and framed and, and, and maybe on the building or in a certain location on the property so that they, they do look better. I, I, I love the point where there are 16 signs coming, going up and down France Road. And that's true. Yeah. And they're big pieces of plywood on two poles painted white with, with a logo on them. And so I, I think we should maybe look at the aesthetics of those signs to size, materials and, and, and what they should look like.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Generally, generally I second, I second that as long as we're looking at this, I, I think we should reassess some of these subparts. And I, I hear us kind of saying it one way or another, even if we're bouncing it up, benchmarking it against communities, but benchmarking it against our own code. If some of these things are larger because they're temporary, well, that's kind of, you know, outside our permanent code. So that background, I feel like would help all of us. And, you know, we can find the opportunities to improve, improve things.
Thank you, Mr. Superlack. Ms. Cram.
Uh, I totally support the making them look more attractive. So Warren's comment. And I, it's, it's really the hardship that the business community probably used to have isn't there anymore. Before this was the only way they were advertising their rentals. But now you can go to the city of Dublin's economic development website and see every single parcel that's for lease. There's a database of everything out there. I mean, so really, there's a highly doubt, there's many people actually getting the phone number off these signs when they go by. You know, these are just annoying to the residents. The, the developers are actually using the city of Dublin's website to see what land is for lease or for sale. And it's all there. So I, I don't feel any bad, I don't feel bad for the business guys to give them one small tiny little sign.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Mr. Schneer.
Well, well, thank you for that because that was actually my, my question. I have no familiarity, you know, other than driving down the streets. But I wonder if, it, it, because all these examples have sounded appropriately egregious. But I wonder if we've sought any input from the business, from the business community. You know, we, we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. We want obviously to balance this with economic development and we don't want to hinder their ability to lease. As I said, I'm not taking a position because I don't have the economic interest fortunately. But should that be taken into account? And maybe the benchmarking will do that. But I, I, I'd like to hear, is there another side to this? Because we haven't heard, we're all in agreement and that bothers me that there's, is there another side to this discussion?
And I, that's a great point, Mr. Schneer, because years ago, and I think that's maybe what Amy, Ms. Cram was alluding to, is we did have this similar discussion about temporary signs. Particularly related to these leasing signs and how to handle that. So again, speaking with engineering, engineering, excuse me, economic development and understanding their perspective, I know that has been a concern in the past. So again, as we bring this forward, we'll, we'll have some discussions with them and we do have a more robust website and people are much more technologically driven these days, but I think that's a great point to be made. And we'll make sure as we continue to bring this forward that we are including them on the conversation.
Thank you both. I, I want to hit on a couple of things before we go on. We've kind of honed in on these leasing signs rather quickly. And I want to make sure that, that we take a step back and look at the entire temporary sign section. So I'm going to highlight each section. If anyone has any issues with the material that they've reviewed, then please let me know and we'll discuss banners currently limited to a maximum of 14 days with other restrictions. Any concerns on the banners portion of the temporary sign code? Okay, moving on, community activity signs. Duration is 24 hours following the conclusion of the event. Of course, with other restrictions. Construction trailer signs. They are mostly governed by restrictions listed in a different set of code. Staff, are you looking for any direction on construction trailer signs at this time? I'm getting a head shake in negative. So development period signs. 75% of the lots in such, in such subdivision, once they've received their certificate of occupancy, then those development signs go away. Any concerns there? Garage yard sale period signs. No concerns there? Gas or inflatable signs or devices?
Sorry, do we, we don't, we don't have a duration associated with the garage yard sale stuff. Do we need one? As long as we're building that, building that duration into all these?
Uh, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it. Garage sales usually. Mr. Fox?
I believe that that may be included, as I recall, in the definition of the sign itself.
All right. If I could give you a moment to find that, we'll do gas inflatable signs and then come back to yard.
Yes. With respect to garage or yard sale period signs, it is a temporary sign erected only within 24 hours before a garage or yard sale in the vicinity of the sign will take place and removed not later than two hours after the garage sale has ended.
Thank you, Mr. Box.
To that event. It can say, you know, it can say, you know, an ideological message, but it can only be up in the period of time around the garage sale.
Perfect. Thank you. Gas inflatable signs, it does have some restrictions as far as safety is concerned, 25 miles an hour. I don't see it, a duration, but it is tied to special events. And so I, I imagine it would fall into the same category, but staff, is there a recommendation for either, Mr. Box, is this the same type where it's contained in the definition or is it covered by special events?
It doesn't look like it's in the definitions part, but my guess is it would be inferred to be related to a special event, but I think we could add something there.
We can make sure that that's plain.
Thank you.
Warren's going to love this one too. This is of course, you know, historically in other jurisdictions, this is auto dealers. What constitutes an event?
A special event at that.
Right. Well, and again, I, I could have a special sale. That sounds good enough to me. To the point of do we need, do we need stipulations around that or do we have them?
Or, or even a limitation as to how many special events, if I determine that I have 365 special events a year.
Always mattresses are always on sale, special event every day.
The special event definition limits that type of circumstance. So it is an event or a special event or activity open to the general public on, and non-discriminatory and that is supported by the Office of Public Information and Special Events. So it is something that is coordinated through the city.
Got it.
Thank you. We have model home period signs. This one has an attachment for the exempt residential sale or leasing period sign as described in a different section of code. Staff, is there any hesitation on timing on that one? Seems to send the topic to the commission. Right? Non-residential sale. Yes.
I think we could add.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, we should, we should add a duration for the model home period sign because I know like in the, the Wyandotte Woods model home has had a sign out in front of it for about five years now. So I, I think there should be some type of time limit.
Agreed. Ms. Roush?
I was going to suggest that let's, we'll take duration as something to look at and apply to all of the various ones that are potentially missing. Yet I mean, somebody has a specific comment as we continue to go through this, but if it's missing, we'll take a look at it. Just generally speaking about.
And that type of sign likewise is especially defined in the definition section to be only during a period when an approved residential development is permitted to maintain a model home on the lot or parcel. So.
So it's tied to the duration that the model home is permitted?
Yeah.
All right. We next have non-residential sale or leasing period signs. This one seems to be the one that, that we would like to dig into a little bit more. So we'll come back to that residential sale or leasing period sign. This again is residential only in nature. Okay. Seasonal business period sign. Yes, Mr. Schneer.
Just had a question on colors. I have a lot of curiosity. Why is that the only sign type that, that talks about colors? And then is, is colors, do, can colors be considered content? And is that enforceable?
Yeah, colors, and I'll let Mr. Box correct me if I'm wrong. The layman's way that the Gilbert decision was explained to me was if you have to read the sign to determine if it's okay or not, you can't do that. So colors are not something that is written. And so therefore we can restrict colors. Mr. Box, any correction or clarity?
The color question is a nuanced one. So Mr. Schnare's perceptive to hit on that. We do have similar limitations on colors elsewhere in the code. And usually things like trademarks that have multiple colors, we don't enforce color restrictions against. Be happy to take more of a look at that from a symbolic speech perspective and see if it's enforceable in this context. I know initially I thought, I thought so, but Mr. Schnare raises a good point.
Thank you, Mr. Box.
What's an example of a seasonal business period sign?
The Halloween express stores that always go in at vacant retail places is probably a good one. Also the Christmas tree lots.
Yeah. And one thing that is helpful about this particular regulation in terms of the colors is that we are talking about a commercial sign, which is a distinction that REED has not displaced. So it is not, for example, a, a non-commercial pride sign, for example, where you'd have a rainbow of colors. Which is not something that would fall under this because it is not commercial in nature.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
And why, and I'm just curious, why, why these three colors? What, what's the purpose on, on something like this to have? What's the planning thought as to just keeping it to three colors and these three colors?
We can, and again, we can look at how that applies overall. Our, prior to some more recent code amendments, you used to only allow three colors, including black and white. So it was, again, it may be looking at that, keeping that really restricted in line with our previous more permanent sign code requirements. So we can look at that as part of our review.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Seasonal decorations. These do have a restriction of not more than 60 consecutive days, but there's nothing to Ms. Cram's earlier comments about, take them down, put them back up. You, you're down for one day. Essentially you can be up for 360 of the 365 days.
Different holidays.
Yeah. So that would, if you could research and come back with some. Right, special events. This does have a little bit more meat to it than the previous items. Are there any concerns with this particular section? And then we have an other category for those that don't fit in the previous categories. I have never been a fan of other because I want to allow what I want to allow and everything else by virtue is then disallowed. And then if they want to come and ask, then we can look at code change. Yes, Ms. Bryant?
Um, what I haven't seen in here on temporary signs is political and I've actually already seen them scattered around. So what is the, what's the regulations regarding political?
So political signs, when we use that term, is inherently a content-based term. So you can regulate by time, place, and manner. We can regulate the size of a sign. We can regulate the time in which it is standing, but we can't regulate it in relation to its message. So something that says no political signs except for two months prior to an election is illegal.
Really? That's unfortunate.
So if we were to define community activities to include an election, then the political signs would fall under the community activity sign regulation.
Yes, because I've already seen them attached to presidential, attached to telephone poles along Dublin Road. So.
Well, Kathy, to your point, I think that's what the other temporary signs is. Like it includes political or mattress for sale or all those because it does specifically mention you cannot attach it to, you to like.
Yeah.
So I think the other temporary signs is catching all those little for sale signs and political stuff that we can't regulate.
Right.
But I do have one additional one that's not on here, which I was curious. Um, so we had, um, there was, sometimes businesses actually do have a temporary sign where they're waiting for their current sign to be made to fabricate. So the question is how, can we regulate how long they're allowed to have that temporary site? Because Warren will remember, there was a hotel in Tullar while we were on planning and zoning that had a temporary sign. We basically a tarp hanging over the sign there for a very long time. And they kept telling us, oh, it's on back order. So I don't know if there's a, if we should, if Jenny can look into an actual temporary commercial sign.
And what we've done in the past, when I've been involved is those are banners. And so they fall, they would fall under our banner section, but if we want to have a separate section that is grand opening, sorry, a, a pre-permanent sign, this one does include a grand opening sign. So if we're falling into the category of the one sign and the temporary sign, because my real sign is on back order, that could prohibit me from also displaying my grand opening banner because my building sign is currently a banner because it hasn't been installed yet. But Jenny, if you could look into that, that would be.
And Jenny, when you're looking into that, I'm also thinking of, we've had people come before where they have basically, they're going to be replacing their sign cabinet. So they put in a really cheap looking temporary thing in their sign cabinet to hold the place while their other stuff being. And that's clearly not a banner. It's some, you know, it's fabricated differently. So.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Thank you, Jenny. All right. Going back to the one that held our attention the most. I, we, we talked about count and that there was consideration for possibly increasing that count based on size of parcel. We did not cover yet the window versus. On-prem external sign. So if I could get a straw poll on, are we looking to allow both or is it one or the other? So I see a one, I see a one, if you hold up fingers and yep. All right, looks like I have enough to say, yes, we are looking at just one sign. A duration, right now it's a hundred and eighty days and we don't have any content in there as far as, you know, continuous days or, you know, of a calendar year, you know, do we want to beef that up a little bit? Or are we comfortable with a hundred and eighty days? Remembering these are commercial only.
I think we need to put some rails around this and make it a little more specific. It's very vague. In a in a calendar, a hundred and eighty days in a calendar year, you can go on, like you said, take it off road, yeah. It needs to be more specific.
All right, so Ms. Roush, you have enough information there, then that perfect. All right, size, right now thirty-two square feet. I would be in favor of doing your smaller parcels where it's a quarter acre, sixteen square feet is good. Your larger parcels, maybe we go to thirty-two and then your large, large parcels, maybe we go to multiple signs.
Do we, well, this, by the way, this is where can we marry this relative to our standard permanent code, which I think has lengths of frontage and street access. Is there ways to build that, some of those stipulations in here so that we're proportionate with that?
Yeah, so staff, do you have enough direction from us to bring back some options on perfect placement? Any concerns with placement? Of course, we have some safety items in there. Ms. Graham?
Actually, it was related to, I think, the size. I don't think we should allow them to have any bigger sign than they would allow be allowed to have permanently. Like any bigger sign or number of signs than they'd be allowed to have permanently.
And then duration is our last one in the existing code outlined, Mr. Fishman.
We 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 didn't mention again aesthetics of the signs instead of having.
Correct.
Like a board on on two post, I like to look into how they all become consistent as far as aesthetics.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. So staff, any concerns bringing back? Okay, and then the last one is the duration. Personally, I understand that commercial properties can be vacant for a long time as they're finding a suitable tenant. But I personally, I I'm not a fan of a hundred and eighty. I'd go ninety, maybe at the most. Mr. Fishman?
Yes, can we tie that to the time that they really are vacant? That they have to specifically advertise the space. If they've got a thousand square feet vacant, they put on the sign a thousand square feet. When it's rented, the sign comes down.
Some of those spaces, though, this is where this is where the whole vacant conversation around commercial process property. Some of those spaces will remain vacant the entire twelve-month calendar years is part of the trouble.
Yeah, and I think that we covered that earlier, talking about economic development and that there is a different avenue for these companies to advertise. Additionally, you know, having a sign that goes up because a lease is expiring and and the tenant is not going to be renewing the lease. To Warren's point, if it has to be vacant, then the the operator of the business can't put the sign up until the person has moved out or the company has moved out. And I I'm not so much a fan of that. I'd love to, if if it's a high-traffic area and the sign needs to go up for fourteen days and it happens to be before those tenants move out, great, then the business gets leased. And I'm not, I'm not claiming the reason they got leased is because the sign went up. Because I think the city of Dublin does a very good job helping partnering with our businesses to ensure their success. Mr. Supalack?
I'm just seed planting this, not necessarily advocating, but I I know there's a conversation that I think staff has to have with economic development. I I wonder if relative to where you're going, if there is is potentially, and I don't know if we can do this or not. If there is potentially, say, a ninety-day allotment, one duration allotment, but then for fee, they can. Somehow get a, you know, second ninety days or something like that. Is that, is there merit to something like that that also potentially produces some some fund for the city? Again, not advocating necessarily, just seeding.
I I know in the past we've done fee in lieu, but typically it's to compensate, you know, green space so we can plant green space somewhere else. If it's a sign going up and it's benefiting, then essentially we're saying, hey, be our friend, rub our elbows and we'll give you an extra sign if he puts money in, the city coffers.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying, I'm not necessarily saying extra sign, but fee it put to your point, fee in lieu of taking, taking the sign down, right? Like there's still a potential consideration there. I don't know, again, I don't know if it's something I want to get into. I'll defer to, I'll defer to others and.
Mr. Boggs?
I I will just say that. Even in talking about the commercial leasing signs, there remains. The First Amendment considerations that the courts have have put out there for us, even for commercial speech. And even when we're not making content-based distinctions, because signs are in the nature of speech, we still have to meet a level called intermediate scrutiny, so it's. Middle, it's not as bad as strict, but it's not just the plain rational basis review. So we will have to provide. Justification, show that it is related to a significant government interest and that there are ample alternative means for them to communicate this message. So to the point that was made earlier about, you know, what other avenues are out there? I think that's a good inquiry as we consider, you know, perhaps a better way to. Remove the visual clutter we get from these so-called temporary signs being up there all the time. Since they, there are more. Means of communicating this message now than there ever have been.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
I would caution against a fee to extend it.
Yes, understood. So we have covered the on non-residential sale or leasing period signs. We have covered the the count, the placement, the size, the height, the duration and the aesthetics. Not in detail, but given direction to staff to. Help us with legwork and research and bring back something that would be worthy of calling Dublin home. And so as we're looking at these signs in across Dublin, really what we're looking to do is reduce the amount of clutter to partner with our businesses to ensure that their business needs are met while still maintaining the aesthetics that Dublin residents have come to call home. Ms. Graham?
I just wanted to ask Jenny, while you're looking at this, to Thad's point, if we can just try to make them parallel. So like the development period sign, we're saying that they're allowed to have it up for a period not to exceed a year. But then we're telling the rental people, they can only have it a hundred and eighty days. So I think we need to pick a timeframe and a size that applies to all of them. Because then we're not regulating the content on it that says for rent or for development, that would be content. So I think we just need to make sure that the durations, as you go through and add durations, are similar for similar type signs. That makes sense.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes, I I think this is really a tough one because we don't want to penalize the development of Dublin and 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 handicap people who are building in Dublin. On the other hand, I think that the signs should be aesthetically pleasing and there should be reasonable time limits. But I I think that's going to be a balance. I think staff's going to have to wrestle with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Kennedy?
I just want to make one final reiteration of the of the sign package not negatively impacting economic development. So if there's a way to circle back with business owners, those that are using signs like this, getting some feedback directly from their marketing team, like how are people coming to them? Is it through the signage or is it through a website? Thanks for the thumbs up, Mark. I appreciate you. So I just want to reiterate that because I don't want there to be a negative impact economically for our city.
And I apologize, I neglected to ask if we'd received any public comment on this item prior to discussion.
We did not receive any public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any final comments, discussion, questions, concerns, Mr. Fishman?
Yes, I don't think we addressed the little signs that are proliferating Dublin now that.
The A-frames?
A-frame signs. I think there is some regulation, but it doesn't seem like there is any. There's certainly a lot of them around now.
Are A-frame signs in temporary signs? I don't recall seeing them there.
They are not there. They are allowed within the Bridge Street district, so they are called out as a permanent sign type. As I recall, within the code, because you would associate them with a particular business as part of their sign allowances. And again, they're only limited to to the Bridge Street district area, including the historic district. You're muted, Warren. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Warren, does that mitigate your concern? I know we've looked at that code recently on the commission.
Areas.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think they're way outside the the Bridge Street district. They're all, they're all over the place, so. I don't know if that's a violation or we should make sure there's a regulation on that or whatever.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see if there's some creeping of that sign type elsewhere.
Got it. All right, any other, Ms. Fox?
I just have one other question for planning. Last year, it came before council for the large banner during the memorial tournament on the AC Marriott Hotel. And and council struggled with that. Is that addressed as a special event sign here, that kind of a sign, Jenny?
As I recall, maybe Thad can chime in on this. I believe that was a separate council action. I don't think we would have accounted for that as part of this this amendment because that's a was a pretty unique scenario for that sign to be allowed there by council.
Is it, is there any way that in this temporary signs that, and I know council supposedly can make these decisions, but but maybe give some holistic or general suggestions on. Allowing something like that because it was really kind of difficult to say whether or not it was a good idea to do it. It it turned out to be a great idea, but it created a lot of angst for council and I'm thinking about councils in the future. And looking at the code to say, you know, under very special circumstances. Signs may be allowed because of these characteristics, advantages to the community, that sort of thing. Just to give a little direction.
Yeah, we can have a little discussion amongst ourselves about that.
Does that fall under special events?
I would imagine it would, but.
I mean, it's not, it it's, it's not necessarily a city event, but it is, you know what I mean?
Right.
It is a partnership on that one. Is that, is that where it falls under special event or special consideration for special events type of thing?
It potentially could. It definitely would not have met the size requirement, so we'd have to look at that. And again, you know, depending on that suited that site because of the large, you know, sort of building elevation that could accommodate that, it's just then you're opening that up to potentially anyone trying to do that. So it's it's sort of a can of worms, but again, we can, we could discuss pros and cons on our end and present that for you all to discuss further.
Thank you. And then just perusing the, going back to Mr. Fishman's comments about the A-frames that are being proliferated throughout the city. The other temporary signs would catch that and the other temporary signs reference back up to one fifty-three dot one fifty-four and one fifty-five, which call for a permit. So if it falls into this category and they come forward, then they would have to, in order to be compliant with code, they would have to get a permit and the permit would not be issued because they are not allowed outside of Bridge Street. Am I interpreting that correctly, Ms. French?
That's how I would interpret it as well, yeah.
So I'm comfortable with the code on the A-frame signs and then if we are seeing concern, then, you know, Ms. Fox can take back to city council that, you know, maybe. Code enforcement could be asked to look if if there's concern that sun clutter is being proliferated around the city, that code enforcement could be directed to clean it up.
And Greg is still on here, so he's hearing us. You have a direct line. And I mean, I guess maybe for our own clarification, is this something that the board and commission would like to allow elsewhere? I'm so afraid to ask this question, but um, because again, council didn't direct us to look at that, but that is potentially part of this. I mean, our, the Bridge Street code allows one per, you know, ground floor tenant in a certain location of a certain size and you do have to get a certificate of zoning plan approval to do that. So I mean, some feedback about whether you'd want to entertain that elsewhere, I would definitely be up for some of that guidance.
Yeah, so Ms. Roush, what I would look for is Ms. Fox leveraging your relationship there. Right now, the the direction that I'm feeling from city council is we have a lot of clutter. And so going back from the request from council where their concern is we have a lot of clutter with, hey, we want to allow more signs, would probably not be my my first approach, but rather in order to be good business partners, in order to make sure that we are fair across the board. We have made these changes to the leasing code and the and the duration on the other items. And, you know, we're recommending, of course, we're recommending these changes. And at the same time, we're also recommending allowing A-frame signs in other non-Bridge Street commercial districts. So if you could get a feel for if that would be entertained by council. In the the interim, as staff is preparing the very long and tedious, and we apologize, homework assignment from the commission and board this evening, then.
That's why we're here.
Is it possible to just ask the commission whether or not, I mean, just as citizen commissioners, whether or not there is an interest in allowing, you know, a sandwich board outside of that? Because I think council wants to hear what your just opinion is. I know their concern has been the quality of the sign, maybe not so much the signs themselves, but the quality. But how do you feel about allowing sandwich boards in shopping centers or in small neighborhood retail centers? Or, I mean, I would like to hear what you have to say about that.
So as we already allow it in Bridge Street, then I would be in favor of it. But I believe it would have to come under the same regulations and be considered as part of the sign package. Since most of those businesses are already in, coming back with a new sign package. I don't know that the little mom and pop shop is going to. Find that a palatable approach, but I do want to be fair. I saw a thumbs down from Ms. Kennedy. Any other commissioners, board members want to offer a an opinion on the sandwich boards outside of Bridge Street?
Um, they exist everywhere already, so I would, I would think we should be, I think we should allow it. I think it would be a disadvantage to businesses outside of Bridge Street if you told them they could no longer use them.
Okay, I got a thumbs up from Ms. Graham and.
We're seeing them in historic Dublin too.
And Ms. Brian, Mr. Schnare?
I would just add, this is, this would be a good time to help businesses.
Yep, Mr. Carter, I saw a thumbs up from you. Mr. Kenaki, thumbs up from you. Mr. Supalack, I don't know that I got an opinion from you.
I, here's the thing, I think if they're, if they are happening, we should probably, we should probably have them come through us with the, you know, with the rest of the sign package, so it's.
Yes, I I do want to stay clear of the, hey, people are breaking the law already, so we ought to consider it type. I mean, it's the sixteen-year-old who's breaking curfew, so therefore I'm going to move his curfew back. I want to make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons and not just because it's happening.
And to clarify the process. Yeah, and to clarify the process, so you are seeing as some of your master sign plans, sandwich board signs included in that. Again, because you're looking at all the pieces and parts, but they are permitted with a certificate and no board or commission approval within the Bridge Street district and the historic district. So as long as they meet the requirements, they don't need a separate approval of that, just for clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. I got a thumbs down from Mr. Grimes. Mr. Fishman? Would you have an opinion on sample courts outside of Bridge Street?
I I think that, I think that if if they come in with approval and their quality, I think they're appropriate in certain places. I I I think that you've kind of got to judge it with the rest of their sign package.
So Ms. Fox, it seems like you have a split board commission. And if we wanted to do it, then we would put some restrictions on it, of course. In addition to what we already have, the quality would definitely be, need to be considered. The one advantage that Bridge Street has is it does have a pretty robust sign code just within the district itself. So perhaps as we're considering the recommendations for the temporary signs, the holistic code going forth to council, then maybe we consider adding some quality controls to different signs.
Yeah, we can bring something back and again, discuss it further as as when we bring back the other amendments, just for further talking and direction.
Thank you. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, are there any other questions or comments on signs before we are headed into communications? All right, staff, looking to you first. Are there any communication items for the board and commission this evening?
I don't have anything. I don't know if Claudia has anything to share.
Just to make sure that you were aware that we canceled 618 because we didn't have cases already.
Yes, thank you for that. All right, board and commission, any communication from you? Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for spending your evening with us. And we will definitely see you next time.
Thank you. Give me a minute to stop the video. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Take care.